The recording. Thank you for joining us for this regular city council meeting, August 27th for the city of Troutdale. If you wouldn't mind, rising and joining the unites by the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And then Kendra, as soon as you're ready, I'll take roll call, please.
Counselor Ripma.
Here.
Counselor Caswell.
Here.
Counselor One.
Present.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Wittrin.
Excused.
Counselor Glance.
Also excused.
Mayor Lauer.
Here.
We have a quorum. Mr. Ray Young, do we have an agenda update tonight?
Mr. Mayor, no, there are no agenda updates. It is as written.
Okay. We'll move on to agenda item number two, public comment. Public comment on agenda and non-agenda, sorry, public comment on non-agenda consent agenda are welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comments should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of the council. The council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comment. Public comments open. If anybody on Zoom wishes to make public comment, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Mayor Lauer, Paul Wilcox, Troutdale.
Paul, thank you very much. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll just read my brief statement. I just had a brief comment on the candidate lineup for this election cycle. If we were still operating under the elect by position system, there were enough candidates for each position to have head-to-head opponents. That's the thinking behind that method, anyway. With this year's record-breaking field, there could even be three-way races. However, candidates are free to choose whom they run against. In a worst-case scenario, the two incumbents could run up unopposed while all the remaining candidates run against each other for the third seat, with possibly no one interested in the two-year term. A similar situation occurred in 2010 when the only incumbent was unopposed and the candidate distribution was 5-2-1. So in my opinion, anyway, whether there's a large field of candidates or very few, as during the last election, the top-three method is far superior from a voter perspective, not to mention the expanded choice possibilities overall. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else on Zoom wishes to make public comment? Now's the time. Go ahead and unmute yourself. And again, state your name and city of residence for the record, please. All right, not seeing anybody on Zoom. Anybody in council chambers wishing to make public comment tonight? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. We'll move on to agenda item number three, consent agenda. 3.1 minutes, June 25th, 2024, city council regular meeting, and July 9th, 2024, city council regular meeting. And 3.2, resolution, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between Metro and the city of Troutdale implementing the fiscal year 2024/2025 Metro and Local Government Annual Waste Reduction Plan.
I move it down.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Kendra, let's take roll.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ripma.
Yes.
Counselor Caswell.
Yes.
Counselor One.
Yes.
All right. We're gonna move on to agenda item number four, presentation by the city of Gresham regarding youth services. City Gresham. I don't have names, so when you come up to the desk, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves and we'll move forward from there. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marcel. Can you guys hear me?
Pull it up a little.
Marcel Fraser with the city of Gresham. I am in the city manager's office.
My name is Iman Gassimi. I'm the youth service manager for the city of Gresham. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Happy Tuesday and good evening, Mayor Lauer, city council members. Thank you all so much for having us here today to be able to present to you on the update on the East Monoma Outreach Prevention and Intervention, also known as EMOPI, E-M-O-P-I, and how it was designed to benefit Troutdale's residents and East County, the East County youth. Like I said, my name's Iman Gassimi and I'm here with my colleague Marcel Fraser. So, next slide, please. Oh, is that us?
No, it should be.
No, I'm trying to go to the next slide. Use the second. It wouldn't be a council meeting without it. There we go.
Perfect.
And one more slide, please. Thank you. So, about EMOPI. So EMOPI is built on evidence-informed practices, meaning that our strategies are grounded in data and research. We focus on ensuring our interventions are effective and tailored to the needs of the communities that we serve. Our mission revolves around providing access to opportunities that promote growth and resilience for both youth and families through education, recreation, and comprehensive support services. Since our launch in March of 2022, EMOPI has been committed to providing, to preventing violence, building stronger community networks, and engaging youth in meaningful ways across East County. A few months ago during the short session, Representative Ricky Ruiz was very instrumental in helping us secure another $2.5 million for this grant. And, but with that, we had to expand our services. Previously, our services kind of focused around Wood Village, Fairview, Gresham, Troutdale area. They said for us to expand our services to 82nd Avenue in Portland, all the way out to Corbett, and for us to get that additional money. And so we saw that as a great way for us to be able to expand and really help out the jurisdictions around here. But with that also came increased youth. So the program here went, supports about 55,000 youth here in East County who are under the age of 21. If it was its own city, that would be the 12th largest city in our great state here. Next slide, please. So our goals are clear and focused on creating a safer and engaged community. First, we aim to prevent and reduce violence through early intervention and deflection strategies that target the root causes of risky behavior. Second, we prioritize enhancing community safety by building stronger partnerships and offering targeted programs that address local needs. And finally, we support youth development by providing enriching activities, life coaching, and mentorship opportunities that help young people build resilience, leadership skills, and a sense of belonging. Next slide, please. So our approach, our approach to achieving these goals involves collaborating at multiple levels. So we partner with multiple community-based organizations like Going Home To and POIC, who will be offering intensive case management and life coaching for those with the highest risk of gun violence. Additionally, we are finalizing memorandums of understandings, also known as MOUs, with local school districts, including Centennial, Reynolds, Gresham Barlow, Park Rose, and David Douglas. This will allow us to conduct outreach at high-risk sporting events, which will also, and then we'll also implement deflection strategies designed to prevent youth from entering the criminal justice system by providing alternate pathways and support. Next slide, please.
So I'll be talking through some of our service modeling, including intensive case management, some of the high-risk MOUs, and then our ceasefire gun violence prevention strategy was centered on an approach tailored by the National Institute of Criminal Justice Reform. So a little bit about intensive case management. Two community-based organizations known as POIC and Going Home To are contract agencies. They both have received contracts these last two fiscal cycles with the goals and approach of providing life coaching and intensive case management for individuals at the highest risk of gun violence. What does that mean? There's a metric system that goes on from the National Institute of Criminal Justice Reform. There might be five to seven risk factors that says if you land on five or seven risk factors, you are at high risk of gun violence or being a perpetrator of gun violence. Again, so that's intensive case management. And then just to touch on some of those inter-agency agreements and the importance of them. So we've identified high school football sporting events and also sometimes basketball games as high risk for gun violence, gang violence, fights, or youth scuffling. So again, we've been taking meetings with all the districts one by one, starting with Reynolds, Gresham Barlow School District, Park Rose, and David Douglas, to tell them about the need to get a large MOU so our contracted agencies can do work within those school districts. And then on the 13th, we'll be providing an update to MESD, which is the Monoma Education Service District. We will be providing a MOU update to all of those service partners, including DPS, although our agency is more geared to East County schools. The next partnership we're really, really excited about is Monoma County has a new gun violence behavioral health unit. So if anybody experiencing gun violence all throughout East Monoma County will have a dedicated therapist that will see families, they will do group therapy, family therapy, et cetera, for victims of gun violence, their family members, maybe their schoolmates, their neighbors, anybody affected by the brutality of gun violence. If that contract is in the works, the county is finalizing paperwork. They will send it back to us for signatures. And then again, I'll just go over the ceasefire gun violence prevention strategy. This is the strategy that is tailored by the National Institute of Criminal Justice Reform. There are about 13 to 20 cities nationwide who run this strategy, including Portland, including, I believe, Knoxville, Indianapolis, Oakland, places that experience relatively high rates of gun violence. Our goal would be to tailor it to East Monoma County. So that would include the sheriff office, Portland PD, and Gresham PD, having a weekly shooting review where they go over every single shooting in the region. They identify people for enforcement, meaning police go in force, and then they identify people for services. So maybe I'm a victim, or I'm a multi-time victim, or I'm always at a scene of a shooting. We will identify that person as a referral candidate. And once that referral candidate is identified, we will give them to Going Home To or POIC to provide ongoing life coaching. Life coaching is extensive contacts, up to once contact every single day, up to 18 months, with the goal of mental health approaches, emotional wellness, maybe parent readiness class, job placements, educational placements. So again, this is, this is an approach that's been around for some years now and is tailored by the National Institute of Criminal Justice Reform. They will basically come in, look at the systems we have for policing, look at the systems we have for enforcement, look at our service models, and then give us a new landscape approach and go from there. Next slide, please.
Perfect. Thank you, Marcel. So our work would not be possible without, without the collaboration and the support of our many community partners. As you can see, those are the logos of all the community partners that we are partnering with, and they're different categories. So it's broken down into three categories where we have pro-social, as you can see, it's the positive community building, activities like volunteering, sports, arts, that really kind of helps that social skills. That's kind of more fostered towards everybody because it's more on the prevention side. Then we have our wraparound services. These are our medium-risk youth, where really they can go either way, where they can go to the highest level or then, or we can have them be as low to no risk. They're the ones who will get comprehensive support tailored to their own individual needs and that, and they're coordinating services like mental health services, education, and housing. And then we have, as Marcel was talking about, our intensive case management where there's personalized, hands-on support for the individuals facing the significant challenges and the highest of risk, especially to the community. So this collaboration here through our partnerships really has allowed us to amplify the work that's being done. And with these partners that we have, it allows us to have a broad range of services and to tailor really to diverse needs of East County, as we know that East County is one of the most, if not the most diverse county in all of our great state here. But when we talk about, for example, pro-social activities, organizations like PAL, which is the Portland Athletics and Activities League, where they focus on flag football, where they focus on junior NBA, which will start here soon, where they focus on self-defense classes like boxing and all that for the youth, and where they've hosted over 1,000 kids that they've helped out since they've began over a year ago. Or we have organizations like ESOGA, which is esports, which is one of the fastest-growing industries in our country. And they're, they're actually based in Walt Morrie Middle School. So it allows these kids to go after school to be able to, you know, if they're not interested in ball sports or anything like that, and they really want to be able to be more introverted and wants to be able to play more games like Minecraft and all that, that allows them to be involved with that and to think of different ways, but still be more involved with their friends. And then we have another one, the Underground, Underground PDX, which focuses on CrossFit and mentorship and all that. So they've done a fantastic job for the kids out here in East County, and their focus has been specifically right in the heart of Rockwood, just to really be able to help out that community over there. But anybody can be able to use that, but they wanted to be out there in Rockwood. These partners offer programs that engage youth in positive, enriching experiences. These activities not only keep our youth engaged, but provide them with the skills and confidence they need to thrive in the communities. Now, for wraparound services, we have those five organizations there. We have three, we have actually four new partners in that area, but three of them specifically, Elevate Oregon, Holla, and REEP. These organizations are experts in providing comprehensive support that addresses the various challenges our youth and families face. For example, REEP, REEP will focus specifically with the Reynolds District, so be able to help out all the schools out there from Alder to the Reynolds Middle School, HB Lee, Walt Morrie, and all the way up to Reynolds High School, one of the largest and most diverse high schools in our great state. Now these, whether it's, and they'll be able to provide mentoring, educational guidance, and being able to help navigate personal or family struggles, which we know that our kids will be able, will be faced throughout the year. Their work is integral to creating a stable and supportive environments for our youth. Now the other two organizations, New Avenues for Youth, otherwise known as NAFI, and Project 48. Project 48 is actually one of our newest ones. Their partnership is going to be more specific services. So for example, New Avenues for Youth will be able to provide support for our youth who are suffering from houselessness, or that's identified as LGBTQ+. Project 48 will be able to provide services for youth who are in the foster system. And because as we know that they're, they're the highest of risk to be sex trafficked and all that. So for them to be able to get that extra service, that is an area that I'm very excited about. So these partnerships, and what they're going to be able to do is get them prepared for career readiness, mental health support, and as well as more family services for that. So in short, our community partners are the backbone of EMOPI. By working together, we're able to create a comprehensive network of support that addresses every aspect of youth and family well-being, from prevention and intervention to mentorship and community engagement. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, we started this program in March of 2022. As you can kind of see here, this is the breakdown of the map of where all our partners located. So as you can see, they're all really more focused out here in East County. So, but all of them, their, as their, their contracts with us have been, as I've created, that their focus will be strictly to 82nd to Corbett. For example, one of a new partner that we also just added and we partnered up with is Work Systems, who, they're just finishing up Summer Works, which they're in the heart of, which ends on September 30th. But part of that partnership is, was to allow from 82nd to Corbett, where we wanted to have specific job opportunities for kids in that, that region. So to make sure that if our investment is going to it, that we wanted to make sure that that investment went to the kids of East County, so they'll be able to get that opportunity. Next slide, please. Indicators of success here. So as I mentioned, since March of 22, we have been able to provide 15,000 youth and their families direct to indirect support. We've seen reduction in violence, increased participation in our programs, and stronger community connections. By collaborating effectively with our schools, behavioral health services, and community organizations, we've been able to align our efforts with Troutdale's values, focusing on family stability and community pride. Our united vision for East County is one of a connected, thriving, and secure future for all residents. With the support of Troutdale's leaders and residents like yourselves here, EMOPI can continue to grow and provide even more opportunities for our youth and families. So we ask that you all join us in the shared vision to build a safer, stronger community. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. If you go to one last slide, please. If you have any questions that you want to reach out to us, both our contact information, our emails are up there. Feel free to send us an email. We would love to have discussions and all that for you, but we're open for any questions that you may have. Thank you so much.
Any comments or questions from council?
I have a question.
Kendra.
I don't normally ask. So is outreach done through the schools?
Yeah, so we have a partnership with the schools. So a big part of what we do is, every Tuesday, we have a meeting. We, it's led by MESD. And so, for example, if there is a youth who needs extra support, they'll reach out to MESD, which will reach out to all of us, and every Tuesday, we'll, we'll meet to discuss that youth. So we'll have multiple partners there, from anywhere from the DA's office to the police, to a whole bunch of different actors who are involved in the violence prevention game. And so then they'll be like, okay, police, what can you do for this youth? Okay, Gresham Youth Services, what are you able to do? And then we'll all be able to pinpoint of what type of services we can be able to support that. And sometimes it's maybe one organization's doing it, or maybe it's multiple collaborative effort to be able to help out that youth. And then, then they follow up with them to make sure that they've been supported.
All right. I love this. I think it's very much needed. But I would, what came to mind was the Gresham City Park. My daughter was there the other day with her friend and her little boy, and I'm sure you guys are aware of, you know, the youth there. Does anybody do outreach there?
Yeah, so we, that had, that's came through a referral from one of our community partners to our police chief. He has, they are partnering with Monoma County General Services, just to see if these youth have any pre-existing history that maybe we can double up on services. Right now, we know they are committing acts of violence and harassment. Knock on wood, it hasn't been with a gun so far. But I think with schools starting, hopefully that curbs some of the enthusiasm of some of our youth.
Yeah.
But outreach has changed over the years. We used to deploy people to specific parks, and then you found out you're paying people to stand around for eight hours, and there only might be one youth who shows up. So we are, we are centering more on tailored case management. When you are referred, you will get a life coach that basically checks in on you on a daily basis. But yes, we are aware of the Gresham, Gresham Park incident.
Great. Thank you.
I was just gonna do a shout-out to, one of my favorite youth programs is the Crops Program that Monoma County does. So I know Jerry Hunter personally that heads it up. He's had a lot of great success just getting kids out in nature more, and they actually do gardening and, you know, they give away a lot of their food and they also sell some of it. Maybe it's something to look into.
I absolutely appreciate that. And actually, the Work Systems, one of the things that they, they partner with multiple CBOs, community-based organizations, and with that, they have a program called Learn In, where kids can be able to get stipends. And part of that stipend program is exactly what you mentioned, is being able to do things like gardening, where they would go to say, a partner community and allow them to do work around that community, to learn a little bit of discipline that way, and then in return, they'll be able to get a stipend for the work that's being done. So the Work Systems internship program is for 16- to 24-year-olds, but this one's for 14-year-olds, and so especially those who are entering high school, late middle school, and who want to be able to make a little bit of money, and this will allow them to learn some, some much-needed career development. But I'll definitely look into that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I'll make a comment that these organizations and the work that you both do represent problems that exist inside of our city. And so it's unfortunate that we need to, it's unfortunate that these organizations crop up, but it's fortunate that we have people that care so much for the, for the community that they're involved in, that they've invested in, that their families live in. And so the support from us, I think, is unanimous. It's, it's something that we not only need, but that we're going to continue to need for this generation, the next generation. So whatever type of support that means, I mean, obviously monetary support, the states got you there, federal dollars have you there. I think continuing to come to council and just talking and reminding us of the work that you all do and the organizations that you work with, the successes that you're having, the struggles that you're having as well, I think will help us continue to support EMOPI and all the organizations that you work with and represent every single day. I don't know if you know, but I'm, I work hand-in-hand with Scott and Quan and Bradley through the Underground, through my business, through my personal business. And so we do what we can and we support them in their venture in Rockwood and their, their calling to Rockwood. And so I can sit here and say that Troutdale will do what we can to support you as well.
And you know, we're, and we really appreciate that, and we appreciate any support that we can get. We're very excited about this, you know, that 16 organizations who are going to be working hand-in-hand, they're going to be meeting with us every two weeks, just so if there's anything that pops up, we can just nip that in the bud and to make sure that we can be able to help the community, the residents, and most importantly, the youth. Because as we know, kids come first and we have to take care of our kids, and we're getting ready for an exciting school year, which is right around the corner. And so that's why we're excited that these programs are going to go live next week. So, so they'll be able to, be able to be at these schools, be able to be at these games, and to really, to, to also make a vibrant East County and to make a big difference.
Absolutely. I am going to open it up to public comment, just in case anybody wants to share their thoughts and feelings with regards to the organization. So public comments open on agenda item number four, presentation by city Gresham regarding youth services. If you are on Zoom and wish to make public comment, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record. Okay, not seeing anybody. Anybody in council chambers tonight wish to make public comment? All right? That is it?
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the work. Thank you. No, I'm gonna end up sitting on this chair.
Just I'm getting to you.
All right, everybody, let's move on to agenda item number five, a request from the Public Safety and Equity Advisory Committee, PSAC, to do a safety survey. Shelby Staffenson, PSAC Chair, you have the floor.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Councilor. Shelby Staffenson with Public Safety and Equity Advisory Committee. And so I'm just here representing. I have some of my fellow committee members here tonight, too, as well. We, as a committee, have wanted to hear from our community and how they feel about everything related to public safety, police, fire, medical services. And so we've created a fairly short survey to gather that information on people's perceptions, feelings, if you will, related to public safety. We have plans to launch the survey next first Friday, which is September 6th, at the city booth, and we'll have a large QR code that people can use to access the survey and take it on the spot or to do it later. And we'll also have some paper copies. The survey consists of 17 questions asking participants to rate their satisfaction with police, fire, and medical services, how safe they feel in their neighborhoods, their parks, and shopping areas, concerns they have about various types of unwanted activities in their area, like property crimes or drugs, and if they have any traffic concerns. We also seek their interest in emergency and disaster preparedness, as well as promoting awareness of our committee. So the only demographic we're interested in is what area of the city, their residences or their property or business, and that's only so that we can know whether we've got a lot of sample from a particular area of the city. And we also need to know if they're from outside the area. It's good to have their perceptions, but we might have a little bit different weight on those responses, so. So again, we plan to launch this survey the first Friday, and then at our next meeting on October 3rd, we're going to evaluate how the first Friday event went and make many necessary adjustments. Then we'll work with city staff on next steps to communicate the survey city-wide. And we know not everyone uses technology, so we'll make paper copies available. We want to reach as many of our community as possible. As you're aware, our committee does not have a budget. So tonight, we are here seeking your support for this survey. We estimate that it's going to cost less than $500 just to do a little bit of printing and potentially access, how it would get out to the community. We would so appreciate your participation and promotion also of this survey to our neighbors. So with that, do you have any questions?
Comments or questions from council?
Well, do they have enough budget to do the printing? Or can we?
We don't anticipate a lot of printing. We think that there are lots of people who do like technology, but I don't really know that we know how many. We just think that. We just think that, from our committee's perspective.
Well, I'm just saying, you estimated $500, which sounds very, very reasonable. I certainly would support your doing it. I think we probably all will. But I'm just, can, is there a budget somewhere for this?
Shelby and I spoke about this before, and I says, we don't have a specific budget for it, but I'm sure we can slip in several hundred copies. We need to, we can put links, you know, on the Facebook page and social media for them, for people to get access to it, so we can do those things. And if she needs money for anything else, I don't really know.
That's what we anticipated this time.
Yeah, so it's not a big expense. And that's why I figure I could, for want of a better term, I could bury another budget to do this kind of copying.
Legally, Ray.
Legally.
Erica is in the back of the room.
We could handle these kind of expenses within our current budgets.
Shelby, where did the $500 come from? What does that mean?
I guess that, just as a, we just said, we thought it would be less than 500. That, less than 500. So in other words, I guess, I just thought it wasn't going to cost a lot of money. And when I first was looking at places to do surveys, one on our committee managed to put it into Google Forms, so it cost us no money.
Right.
But when I was pricing out potential places like Survey Monkey, et cetera, those things were less than $500.
I guess maybe that's what she was asking for, because the city will just cover, make a little photocopies they need within reason and posting electronic sites. But maybe if the council wants to make a motion, authorize $500 expense for things such as Survey Monkey or other things they may have minor expenses for that are written checks out to another agency like that, that might be appropriate.
We managed to do it without, like I said, someone talented on our committee was able to do it. So I'm just like, great. So it costs us nothing there. It's just the printing. And I don't really know, oh, does anyone else have to add on our committee? Oh, okay, so the other thing was, when we were at First Friday, we talked about to incentivize people that we would have some little swag if they filled it out, the survey on the spot, you know what I mean? So at First Friday, we were going to have maybe some little, little bit of swag. So that would cost, I guess, some money. But I believe I talked to Erica, and she said the city does already have a little bit of stuff that they do for those sorts of things. So it's not, I'm not asking for anything that's above and beyond what the city doesn't already have in their coffers.
Okay. Move back over here now. No, it's not you. It's the sun coming in. Any other comments or questions from council? Councilwoman?
Yeah. You know, I like, I like on surveys if they give the option for other, so you can, in case there isn't one item that fits what you want to say.
We have, on the paper copies, I have to admit, when we put it into Google Forms, we don't have the option of NA, which we said is not applicable. Like, I have no basis to give a rating of, I'm not satisfied, a dollar, I'm highly, I'm very satisfied. We didn't have that, I didn't have a way to, I guess, accomplish that. So on the paper copies, we actually have. And then there's a reason, we ask for a reason why. So you can get, you could give us some more information to clarify, like, you know, like, I don't feel like I want to rate or this, I want to give some more information of why I'm giving this rate. Is that what you're asking?
And then I had another, I've been hearing, I've been hearing that your group has been working on red light cameras. Is that going to be on the survey to have that, to see if people want red light cameras? It hasn't come across our desk yet.
Well, actually, that's interesting that you bring that up. The red light camera thing, we tabled it as a committee a number of months back. But then it came up recently. Somebody told us that we were tasked with that. So I guess I could ask you guys right now to clarify that for us, because we, as a committee, tabled it because of all the construction happening on 257, or anticipated. And we said, how can we address or even legitimately talk about red light cameras when the road's going to change? So, I mean, it's true, we could talk about it at the bottom, but as us as a committee, we tabled it. But then it come up, came up recently. Somebody talked about and said we were tasked with it by council. So let me ask you guys, did you task us? We didn't want to shirk our duty if we were supposed to do something about that.
We didn't. I would certainly remember. We never tasked the committee, PSAC, to take up the red light cameras.
Okay.
It's not been discussed.
Okay, well, so that's, we tabled it. As our committee, we had tabled it. So I wanted to do the right thing if you guys had tasked with us here. We tabled it because we felt there was higher priorities. We needed to get this survey. There was other things going on on the committee, so we didn't. The committee said, let's just put it off till later. We'll deal with it after we get the survey going. And so we'll just keep it tabled. Okay, if you guys didn't task us with this, we don't need to do that.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
If the point of the survey is to see how people feel about safety in their community, and you said, did you say traffic violations? I think you said traffic violations.
And any traffic concerns?
Traffic concerns.
Traffic concerns.
Wouldn't a red light camera be part of that?
If the survey brings it up, then I think, then we would, we would look into it.
Okay, so is it going to be an open-ended question saying, do you have any traffic concerns?
It's an open-ended question, traffic concerns.
A space for people to fill in their own words?
Yep.
You're not going to have options?
Right, there are a few questions where we look for words and not just a rating.
Have we thought, so if, going off of what Ray said about we can make our copiers available, obviously, the copiers don't operate themselves. When we talk about making copiers available, does that mean we will make staff available to make these copies? And if so, is that factored into the price of the copy?
Yes, I just assumed that, assuming that she was going to bring me some papers. I said, hey, Ray, I need 100 pages, 200 pages of this, or 300 pages of this. And I'd walk over there and I'd hit 300 and walk away and come back in a few minutes and had my stack and give it to her. So hopefully not a lot of time involved.
Okay.
I mean, I think this is good, and I think it's timely as we're looking into our police and fire contracts. And I think that there could be useful information for us to go forward in how we structure contracts or what we are asked of them, so that's good. And I had the same question as Mayor Lauer, where I want to make sure there's some open-ended questions so we can get some potential real thoughts and feedback from, from people on what their real concerns are possibly, or not, so.
We did our best to make it fairly short because we did a little test saying, people aren't going to take a mini-page survey. And we had tried to have short answers, but room for people that want to write something lengthy. And I know that makes it harder statistics-wise to gather this information, but you know what, sometimes these darn surveys, you don't get that many responses. Anyhow, I think you can, as a committee, can look at them. But we hope, the plan is, if this, we get fairly good response from the First Friday, that we would do the next steps to get this out of there. We would go to the other committees, ask them to promote it too, to encourage people to participate. So we can really kind of get a sense. We want to be an effective committee. We want to do something. We want to be helpful to the city, so.
Councilwoman?
I just wanted to thank you. I love it when the committees come up with their own ideas. And I know it's a lot of extra work. I think about the community garden, for example. You know, it was self-generated by the Citizens Advisory Committee. So keep up the good work. I think it's a great idea.
We hope to get a lot of responses and really get some good information that will help us.
I'm going to open it up to public comment. Public comments open on Agenda Item Number Five, a request from the PSAC Committee to do a safety survey. Anybody on Zoom wishes to make comments, go ahead and state your name and city of residence for the record.
Mayor Lauer, Paul O'Coax, Troutdale. Just want to say, I like surveys. I think they're, I think the group's making a very reasonable request.
Well, there you go. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. Anybody in council chambers wishes to make public comment, now's the time. Go ahead and approach the table and state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Saul Pompeo. And I have a restaurant downtown Troutdale. I'm really happy you do this, Shelby. Because we have different perspectives. In the front street, I have my tables and chairs for 16 years, and nobody's stolen. But in the back, they already stole me four cars and five times they make a hole in the gas. The show be, you need to do very specific in the different areas, because it's only 50 yards, it's completely different what happened. And I have hopes, I hope so the questions are specific, like, how often do you saw the sheriff department patrol the streets? I remember in the times when this Troutdale police, they patrol the back of these buildings all the time. I saw. But in the last years, I never saw, or very, not very often, I saw the sheriff patrol the back. That means all the business in the back, we have a very big trouble about safety. You know, the homeless and whatever. You know, some, we need to move all our trucks up every night and put down every morning because we have a, in the back of the downtown, it's very unsafe. And I have at least four or five girls. Sometimes they are younger than 18 years old. And when they go out to the back, we need to go to their cars because it's very unsafe. So very, thank you for doing this, Shelby.
Thank you, Saul. Anybody in council chambers wishes to make public comment? All right, closing public comment. Okay, so remind us of the ask again. Shelby?
Less than $500.
Well, let's put a, let's put a period on it instead of a question mark. So $500, is that the ask?
Sure.
Okay, we have an ask on the table.
We're in charge of all of our surveys.
Yes, yes.
Very affordable.
Well, I would move that we approve PSAC's request to do a safety survey and authorize $500 from the city to support it.
Seconded by Councilor White.
Mayor Lauer?
Yes.
Councilwoman White?
Yes.
Councilman Ripma?
Yes.
Councilman Caswell?
Yes.
Councilwoman One?
Yes.
All right, passes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work you do. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, Public Hearing. Ordinance introduction and ordinance amending the penalty provisions of the Business License Requirements, Chapter 5.04 of the Troutdale Municipal Code. Mr. Ray Young, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first reading on ordinance change currently within the ordinances of the state, city, state of Troutdale.
The state of Troutdale. Let's do it, buddy.
It is illegal to conduct a business within the state without a license. The punishment is $300 fine or 90 days in jail. The city prosecuting attorney, Sam, has asked us to please not make a first offense a jailable offense because that makes it a crime. And it's just, it's a lot of work because the city potentially has to pay for a court-appointed attorney. We have to provide for a jury trial. Just costs the city more money, takes longer. And he has not seen nor does anticipate anybody on a first offense being sentenced to jail or asking to be sentenced for jail. And I will tell you, based upon my 40-plus years of experience within a civil court, no one on a first offense for operating a business without license has ever gone to jail. So he has asked that we modify the ordinance such that it is a cumulative and increasing penalty. The first offense is up to a $300 fine, second up to a $600 fine. Then the third offense is potentially a crime of 90 days in jail and/or a $900 fine, I believe. So, yeah, his suggestion was, it just potentially saved the city money and would not really inhibit our enforcement of the requirement to have a business license by making essentially an infraction for the first two offenses and not a crime until the third. That's about it.
Comments or questions from council?
No, I think that's a good, good catch. It's a little overzealous.
Even though there are some people who have called in and wished they could send the guy up at 200, Hogan and Cherry Park who's selling political flags and stuff out there. But we said, no, that's the county right away. We'll let the county deal with that issue. But yeah, no, normally we've not had anybody. Usually it's somebody maybe going Dordedale selling magazines, you know, they used to do that.
Throw them in jail.
Yeah. Who didn't have a license? They go, oh, they didn't know, and things like that. So we've never really got a problem with getting enforcement anyway, voluntary enforcement.
Any other comments or questions from council?
Are the fines amount, is that something that's set by the state, or is that something that we can set too?
Set by all of you.
Were the, like, numbers just pulled out of a hat at one point? Is that?
Thank you for saying hat.
Yes, I pulled those numbers out of my hat. I made the first offense the same as the prior, because previously it was $300 for the first offense and 90 days in jail. So I just eliminated the 90 days in jail. So the first offense was what it was before in fines of 300. And then I just, out of my hat, doubled it to 600 for the second one, tripled it to 900 for the third one. There was some symmetry to it. So it wasn't completely out of my hat, there was some symmetry. And of course, the 90 days in jail is 10% of a $900 fine, so I guess you could say that was symmetry also.
I love it.
But the council is free to make any, you know, suggested changes in terms of those amounts.
I'm going to play devil's advocate.
Let's not belabor this.
I'm going to play devil's advocate.
I've heard you.
What if people have complied with the rule because there's 90 days in jail? And what if they don't comply with the rule because it's only a $300 fine? What if we just upped the fine a little to 5,000 and 1,500, and there's a little bit more teeth behind the fine?
Well, I think we need to do a survey, and I think if you had Shelby, there would be a survey for her business license order. Would you really have done this, you know, if there wasn't a penalty?
I'm fine with leaving it the way it is and going 369, but I didn't know if anybody else wanted to put a little bit more teeth instead of the antiquated, what'd you say, 40-year-old?
Yeah, it's been $300 in first offense for a long time.
And it's not to exceed $300. The judge could.
Be 100 bucks.
It's very sensible. Let's not spend all night on it.
Because sometimes it's just somebody they forgot, they weren't paying attention, you know.
All right, if you guys want to be easy on crime, that's fine with me. Any other comments or questions from council? All right, any comments from the public on Zoom? If you wish to comment on this, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record.
Public hearing.
Yep, public hearing is open. Thank you. Anybody in council chambers tonight wishes to comment during the public hearing? Now's your chance. Okay, not seeing anybody. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. This is the introduction, so we'll see you back again next council meeting, no, next month, right?
10th of September.
Of September. Okay. I think we're good. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, a resolution approving the exclusive franchise agreement with Waste Management of Oregon, Ryan Lagura, environmental specialist. You have the floor?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Hello. My name is Ryan Lagura, works for the city of Troutdale as an environmental specialist. And yes, I'm here tonight for the resolution approving the exclusive franchise agreement with Waste Management. And I'll wait for, can we get the slides? Do you want to move on? Next slide. Yeah, thank you. Just as a quick review, we had our franchise agreement, the current The current one that's been extended started in 2016. We had conducted a survey in '22, August of 2022. And then we had a franchise review with City Council on January 10, 2023 to, to find out if we wanted to move forward with Waste Management or open it up for other haulers. We, we voted to move forward with Waste Management. And we then had our expiration of the franchise agreement, December 31, 2023, after which we needed to do several extensions for that while we worked out the details of this current franchise agreement. Next slide, please, Kenda. To go over some of the changes that we have, one is format changes. So we've kind of, we had a, a long list of sections in the previous franchise agreement. We've now broken them out to some different general headlines for the sections to fall under to hopefully have ease of finding material in need. Next slide, please. Waste Management in our negotiations has agreed to offer support for several items, which I don't believe were on the previous franchise agreement. One being emergency response to items such as natural disasters or any emergency declaration and to work with FEMA and their response and provide services as soon as practical. And obviously in coordination with the city. They've also agreed to offer some First Friday event support as we requested by the city. And those details would maybe still need to be worked out, but there is that offer there. And then to expand the footprint of servicing, the expanded footprint of new town, town bins that they will be collecting. Before, we had just a few, not as many as we do now. So that, that is helpful for them to offer that support. And next slide, please, Kenda. Under the collection of support and management, we have reporting and record maintenance. They're not gonna have quarterly reports bring forth some statewide customer service metrics, which we didn't have before. And we also will receive a log of complaints that are specific to Troutdale residents. So when Troutdale residents may call in and complain about maybe service issues or whatnot, we will now begin to see some of that feedback and, and, and begin to kind of better understand what is the breadth of any customer complaints from Troutdale residents. The statewide customer service metrics, that is statewide, obviously. They aggregate most of their telephone customer service data. And that was, we were unable to receive data specific to the city of Troutdale. So that's why we are going to be using still statewide aggregated data. Also, on the reporting end, we will be receiving, the annual report will now include spills that occur within the city. We were not receiving that prior to this franchise agreement. So that means if there's a truck that's spilling some oil or fluids around the neighborhood as it's going to collect the garbage or recycling, we now will be able to, events like that, that pose a threat to potential discharge into our collection system for stormwater or and/or going into the river, we'll now have some reports on that. So that's very helpful as well because before it, we were reliant on customers or residents calling us to report something like that. Another item that we'll be receiving are one ad hoc report per year. So that can be a variety of items that the city may be requesting from Waste Management to maybe understand a service issue or, or what have you. That, as its name implies, it could be a wide range of items. Over on the customer service front, as I mentioned, we're gonna have new telephone-based customer service metrics that will be statewide to better track the average speed of phone calls answered and the percentage of phone calls abandoned. I know I've received calls over the years from residents complaining that they had to wait for a very long time to speak with someone. And so now this will help hopefully at least on a statewide basis, but we'll still have some information on, you know, well, what is the average in the state? That's not necessarily specific to Troutdale, but like I said, we, we attempted to get that. We were unable to, but hopefully this will also begin to shed some light, like if they're meeting their own metrics that they want to hit on a statewide basis. The Waste Management Troutdale website also now offers an online customer service form. So if you are with technology inclined and have the means to, you are able to go online to that website, fill out a form, it's relatively simple. I've looked at it, submit it, and that should also help hopefully expedite some of your service requests that are basic, missed collection or what have you that may occur. So that's, that's a nice bonus now we have on the website. The website will also be updating instructions for residents on how to reach a live agent because I know I've received some calls lately that have, residents have been frustrated because they haven't been able to get a live person on the line very easily. And, you know, there's a long call, a phone branch of options. And so it's not always very clear to someone, how, how do I speak with someone now? Instead of waiting and waiting. So this, these instructions I'm hoping are gonna help residents better understand. And we can also kind of spread the word on that ourselves in the champion or on our own webpage as well. So residents know that better. Next page, please. Some added services that we have now are an annual bulky waste events will be provided not only to single-family residents once a year, but multifamily residents at those properties if approved by their own property owners and/or managers. So that is something, you know, obviously we can't go in there without their approval. But Waste Management is willing to offer those events for those residents as well. So that's very helpful. And something that's metro, I know as a region is pushing a lot, is to have multifamily residents have access to services such as a bulky waste collection. So that will help meet any requirements that they may have down the line. The Troutdale Transfer Station will now be open for weekend service, potentially up to twice per year at the city's option. So this would mean residents and non-residents of the city of Troutdale, because it will be open, are able to bring their bulky waste items and drop them off. We're hoping to add some additional services for collection there, possibly reuse, working with other organizations in the region and/or possibly curbside or non-curbside recyclable materials that may be on statewide lists that are not curbside going forward in the future. So there's hopefully some potential to add additional services aside from simply bulky waste drop-off. But nonetheless, that will be at least convenient twice per year perhaps for residents versus going, driving down a sandy and/or in the metro of public transfer stations. We're also able to have a pilot program to test and/or implement new services, material processing, et cetera, for, you know, I, you know, anything that may be coming on the horizon that we want to see, how is this gonna work here, what may be the cost? We can maybe do it on a small scale, see how it works, get the, the kinks worked out, get maybe some better sense of cost, participation, whatever it might be. But having a pilot program option is nice to, to negotiate with Waste Management on, for that. And then we also did add protocol for if there are spills and leaks, we kind of put it in writing for them to, you know, spell it out, okay, what, what should happen when these spills and leaks occur? Rather than me getting a call from a resident, me calling them or emailing them and them having to respond to it. Hopefully this will help with drivers understanding what I'm supposed to do with these spills and leaks and, and how that's gonna be handled with the city a little better. So it's a smoother reaction and quicker reaction, I should say. Next slide, please, Kenda. And that's really the high-level items that I pulled out from the agreement. But I'm happy to answer any questions. I do have Dave Huber from Waste Management here as well to help answer any questions if you have questions or comments for him or myself. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions from council? Yeah?
Yeah, go ahead. Say, my, I think one of the things I remember us talking about was the, the actual specific cans that we would have available to us, being in some sort of locking mechanism. And that, you know, it locks and it doesn't unlock until the truck lifts it up, et cetera, to help with our, our windy days that we tend to have. Is there anything specific? I kind of read through it, it didn't seem like there was anything specific, just said the locking, which could mean the, the bungy words, the poor design of them currently. The rubber locking thing that comes down and always breaks off. So is there something that, in there that we will for sure have access to that?
Well, you, you didn't miss anything specific to that in the agreement because I, I frankly wanted to leave that separate only because that was gonna be more of a rate issue. There will be a cost added to that new cart. And so I wanted to allow us to have review of the costs involved with the new cart and not necessarily have costs associated with adopting a franchise agreement. We did keep of, of course, as you mentioned, the, the language that we do still need locking carts. How that's done is obviously up in the air right now. But we do have that one locking mechanism cart that I brought before council. That's still kind of what we found to be the best that we can find. So yeah, that will be addressed at a later date though, councillor, when it's done for a rate review.
And what is like, let's say we adopt this tonight, what's the timeline on something like that being available to everyone?
Oh, well, we would have to bring it before council as a rate review item. Yeah, and, and so we're a little behind on our rate review issue this year because we've been kind of waiting to get this franchise agreement signed off first before we moved on to rates. But there is a, there is, so we would need to be bringing that issue before as part of the rate review. And then there would be a lead time of when you order the carts, how long. It ranges probably about six months to be safe. That it would actually be by the time Waste Management would order it, receive it, and then start to distribute it throughout the community.
Sure, okay. And so if I hear you correctly, the franchise agreement and maybe the cart thing are kind of semi-separate issues, but the locking thing is in there.
It is.
To kind of enunciate that we, that's something that's important to us.
Yeah.
Am I hearing you correctly?
Correct, yes. And, and so we need locking carts for sure. Unfortunately, I, we won't be having locking carts that are different from what we currently have for this upcoming winter season, just because of the lead time, like I mentioned, and, and still needing to do an approval for rates. And the estimate I've heard is relatively around $2 per cart. So, you know, that could be $2 on top of your monthly rate addition, I should say, so. But again, that's kind of very general initial.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
You're welcome. Good question. Councillor White?
Yeah, you know, I was glad to see the improvements on the phone situation. That was one of the complaints I was hearing. These are from business owners I've talked to. And another one they have is like, they feel they don't really have the, the ability to clean their own dumpster without, you know, making a mess in the parking lot or the public right-of-way. So how does that work if someone has a commercial account and has a dumpster that needs cleaning? Is that service available to Waste Management or?
You know, I, I would say that if it's really dirty, I would imagine that they would want to contact Waste Management to possibly have that container switched out and so that they may be able to do better cleaning. Dave probably would be able to speak to that better than I can on how they would want to handle it. But I believe that's how they would do that in terms of, you know, an immediate waste cleanup at their site. You know, best practices, I would imagine, would, would be in play there. I'll speak briefly, councillor White, on your comment on the customer service issue. I, I recognize that this doesn't solve everything. And so, and I've, as I've kind of iterated to Dave and Waste Management, like this is a step in the direction so that hopefully we get some information. So let's say next time we come to do a half, you know, four-year review of the franchise agreement and we look at, well, what's the performance of Waste Management bin? What are the metrics? And so we can at least pull out now quarterly reports of these customer, you know, response times, abandonment rates and, and, and logs of complaints and say, okay, here's where they were when we started the franchise agreement, here we are a couple of years down the line. So we, we're, this is the first step to help build an argument whether or not they're doing well or they need improvement still and we need better, we need better assistance in learning what our residents are going through and not just an aggregate black hole of the whole state of Oregon, so.
And then Dave, wouldn't you mind introducing yourself for the record, please?
You bet, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Dave Huber, Public Sector Manager for Waste Management. So yeah, thank you for having me this evening. And to answer your question, councillor White, yeah, on, for commercial businesses that have containers that have that issue that you described, you know, typically we, if, if they, if they want that container swapped out, if it's that dirty, we'll, we'll typically do that. And we, we try to do that like every year. So if it, if it happens once a year, we'll swap it out. We note, notate the, the specific account so that it doesn't, you know, it's not like we're swapping out a container there every, you know, two months or three months. But I feel like if it needs to be done every year or annually, we can do that. Thank you.
Yeah. I think another, some more feedback I received about the frustration with getting a call through is not, one, they, they're not clear on which number they should be calling. And the other thing that's, that I've heard feedback on is that if there's like a missed pickup, then the dumpster's got extra material in it, they're getting charged for having a dumpster too full. And if, if, I think it would save a lot of time for our businesses if, if Waste Management could make note that, hey, this wasn't picked up, it's gonna be fuller, you know, disregard the overfill charge. And it might cut down on, you know, because first you gotta catch it on bill. And then secondly, you gotta go through this phone line, which in the past, I guess, has been pretty cumbersome. Just, just a little feedback for what it's worth and I'm curious, does the city get any funds, Ryan, off this contract?
Yes.
What percentage does the city get? Eric's in the back.
I was gonna say, Eric would probably be your best person to answer that. I do not remember that offhand.
It's 5%.
5%, okay.
5%.
5%.
And is that to like cover your, part of your work that you do or administrative work or?
That's another good question, councillor White. I'm not sure where the 5% goes exactly, but yeah, I, I assumed it was into the general fund, but, and I think part of my salary comes from that fund because it's solid waste and recycling, but I don't know the ins and outs.
I'll save that one for Bojett. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Let's open it up to public comment. Public comment is now open on agenda item number seven, a resolution approving the exclusive franchise agreement with Waste Management, Management of Oregon Incorporated. If you're on Zoom and you wish to make public comment, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record.
Mayor Lauer, Paul Hockström.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Submitted several to Ryan that were answered more or less, not entirely satisfactory, but I'm gonna go for now. And a couple additional though. Wonder the status of outside haulers that don't pick, that pick up items that Waste Management doesn't. Obviously referring to Ridwell in particular, but there could be others. And my other question is, I read the contract in pretty, pretty fine detail. And I saw there were some customers' responsibilities about, you know, where to put their containers and such. But I didn't see anything about owner's responsibility as far as overloading their containers. So I've seen trash containers in our neighborhood in particular where people have three or four kitchen trash bags on top of the container with the lid wide open, you know, well above lid, lid level. And I just wondered how they, how they deal with that. Because I would think they wouldn't be able to dump it in that condition. They'd have to take the bags off the top and put them back in the container and then dump the container twice. So I just had this to questions, thanks.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else on Zoom wishes to make public comment? All right, not seeing anybody. Anybody in council chambers tonight wishes to make public comment? Okay, go ahead and approach the table if you guys wouldn't mind making a chair available. State your name and city of residence for the record.
Cherry Winners Troutdale. I want to add a little bit to what councillor White said about trash and overflowing. And at least I think he said it anyway, but I, I have a picture here and you probably can't see it very well. Maybe you can, that's my front doorstep when it's blowing wind. And even if we have locking cans, I happened to have stopped the garbage men before and said, hey, I'm getting a lot of stuff here and those people down the street, I get their mail, I mean, their recycled mail at my front door. And I can tell, you know, the houses that it's coming from, from those. And And I've had it be that the garbage man told me, well, we don't really want them locked down because that means we have to get out and unlock them. And we don't really want to have to do that. So, you know, you got to report it and then code enforcement can go out and take care of something like that. And it's, I'm not looking to get somebody in trouble, but one of the things that came down was a citation to one of those things about the problem with their garbage. And so I'm thinking a locking one, what says they have to lock it? They'll just pile it high, it just tips over and it runs down the street and it just fills up where the wind comes around and goes right up to my front door. And it's just a pile of garbage. And, you know, thankfully, the house behind me has been purchased by somebody and they're fixing it up, but they had a terrible rat problem. And I just imagine the garbage that ends up, that's at my door. It goes swinging around and fills up the whole side of my house with trash, too. So, I mean, I'm not sure that the, the situation will be remedied with the locking thing. I mean, I like the idea of it, but I still think that there's something that has to be done about overflowing cans. And, you know, I, I know we can't do anything about the wind, but just some responsibility in that capacity or some extra thought on it or something. Anyway, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I need days in jail.
Yeah. Anybody else? Go ahead and approach the table and state your name and city of residence for the record.
My name is Al Pompeo. The reason I come is for about, talk about garbage. You know, I have the picture of my container without, they don't show enough, enough often. I pay for the service twice a week, but for the recycle, they show only once a week or every other week. And one of the things I want to know, what is the telephone number I can call and talk with a person? Because when I try to find an internet telephone, they ask me, they, they don't know about the local. And I want to do a local because we have overflow. We are a busy place and we refill the, the recycle in a week. If they don't show, we have a trouble. And there's no residents complain, but what we can do if they don't show. Like the glass container, I have one glass container and I refill it up in one day. I sell a lot of wine. And it's possible in the contract, they need to have the container enough or they can come in more often. Another little trouble we have is when in December, we are very busy because we do Christmas parties everywhere. Even if it's snow or freezing, we keep doing freezing. I know the truck cannot, cannot show to pick up the garbage. I understand that point, the truck can slippery. But when they show one week later, we have full container and two outside containers garbage waiting for them. And if we don't have a system, they only take one container a day, we fill it up again, the container is done. The next time is overflow and they charge overflow because we already have two or three containers ready to fill it up. We need to have a system with the company. We don't over, because we don't want to pay all the time overflow when it's, I understand they cannot come to pick up. But the next time, we need to have two or three. If they don't show in two times, you know you have more garbage comes. That's how we need the telephone number we can call and say, okay, we have this problem, please. And the problem with the, I have 15 years and I really never saw they change my container. It's the same container, it's really, really dirty. Sometimes when it's empty, it's think very bad. When if we put, we put right away garbage because we cover, just thinking about, we want to at least once a year, once a year, change. Sometimes we have, every business is kind of difficult, have different specific things. And we need to coordinate. In my case, I use a, we use a plastic container because the metal containers everybody have is too heavy for the gentleman pool. Many years ago, we decided we have a plastic container, more light, because that way the gentleman, they move, they, they can do it. The thing is, it's only one in the whole plant, how can take it, wash and bring it to me again? Because the, the, you know, we need to coordinate with throw the waste manager, how we can do it, how we can clean our container. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sal. Anybody else wishes to make public comment? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Any other comments or questions or discussion from council?
I just have one.
Yeah, Counselor White.
When we were last talking on the subject, you know, I was, I threw out the idea of us, you know, getting feedback from waste management on maybe some policies we could do to help keep rates down. Is there something, you know, the customer could do that would make your guys' operation more streamlined and efficient? So, we have time, you can answer that sometime during this negotiation, I guess. Just looking for ideas to keep the rates down as low as we can.
Yeah, no, thank you, Counselor White. That's, you know, that's certainly something that we, we're always looking for, ways to make things more, more efficient, because if, as we become more efficient, you know, that ultimately keeps the cost down for the customers. And so, you know, and, and of course, one of those ideas, I know that Ryan and I have discussed, as well as, you know, presenting the locking carts, which, you know, that's, now, it comes with an extra cost, but it would make things more efficient. You just don't know how much more efficient that would be for, for the drivers because it would be an automated locking system. But yeah, there's, I mean, I can't think of anything else off the top of my head, but we're always open to that. And of course, part of the new contract has that opportunity to do a pilot program so we can, you know, there's certainly ideas out there or, or we're certainly open to looking at those.
I always, I always space the cans and I don't know if it makes a difference, but I go, you know, it gives that driver a little more room to maneuver with without knocking the other can over. So, it's ideas like that. And maybe we could get it out in our champion and say, hey, request from waste management to do these things and might help keep costs down. And then later.
I'll just briefly expand on what Dave mentioned with the potential savings with the locking cart mechanism is, it's really about stop time. So if that truck has to sit there, driver gets out, yeah. So increasing that time of efficiency of pickups, because majority of our city is actually non-automated currently. There's only one or two routes with automated trucks collecting the carts, so that could be a savings. We don't know, though, you know, that's, that's, to, to say it's going to make a drastic difference would be, yeah, cool, you know, I wouldn't say that right now. There's all, always, you know, reducing level of service. If you can get away with maybe a larger can that's picked up less frequently, that might be a savings for someone if they, if that fits, you know, what they're producing in garbage. So, yeah, I mean, there's, there's other more drastic ways to possibly do savings in terms of being in the metro region, but, you know, those probably aren't feasible, so I won't mention.
I do.
Yep.
If there's no other comments, discussion, or questions, it entertain motion.
I move adoption of a resolution approving the exclusive franchise agreement with waste management of Oregon Incorporated.
Second.
Second by Counselor White.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Rehna.
Yes.
Counselor Castle.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we'll see you again.
Yep.
All right, moving on to agenda item number eight, a resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement with employees represented by ASME Local 3132. Mr. Mueller, Finance Director, you have the con.
Got it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Good evening. As I outlined in the staff report, the most recent collective bargaining agreement between the city and the employees' union, ASME Local 3132, ran its three-year course and expired on June 30th. We continue to operate on those existing terms until the subsequent agreement is ratified by the membership and adopted by the city council. What's in the packet tonight is what was reached as a tentative collective bargaining agreement. It's tentative until both parties have approved it. The membership had their vote and ratified the tentative agreement on August 1st. And then tonight, adoption by the city council presumably would be the other part of it and then it would run for three years until June 30th, 2027. As is customary with the past union contracts with the city, a three-year term. As I outlined in the staff report, there were many hours spent on the, in negotiation sessions. We had a kind of a alternating one in by Zoom, the next one in person, back and forth, spaced a few weeks apart at each meeting. There's a whole range of articles in the contract, some 30, along with another four exhibits, covers a whole range of items from union security and recognition, nondiscrimination promotions, layoffs and recall, personnel files, discipline, dispute resolution, strike provisions, emergency, declaration of emergency, inclement weather, drug and alcohol policy, sick leave, hours of work, wages, retirement, health insurance, and more. Of the articles, some 22 of them were, were addressed and some modified very minorly, some more significantly. Wages and is of course always a prime item of interest in each contract. And as I outlined in the staff report, we addressed the wage, wage scale adjustment, the COLA for the July 1st, which would be retro to July 1st, subject to the adoption tonight, is made up of two components. One is the 2.87% CPI increase that the employees did not receive a year ago due to the cap that was in place. The calculation would have provided for a 7.87% increase a year ago, but the contract had it capped at 5%. So the employees have been without that increase for the, that year plus. And then the most recent COLA calculation for the most recent year is the other part of that component. Those two pieces added together bring you to seven and a quarter COLA as we walked through during the exec session back in April, I think it was, I forget now when exactly we, we had that. Other item, items of note that I would mention are retirement, two different components there, the PERS IAP contribution, a change in the payment method from employer-paid contributions or what PERS referred to as EPT contributions, switching them to member-paid pre-tax or EMPPT. City has made the EPT contribution since 2009. The switch subject to this would be prospective based on PERS rules, so it's an aspect of the contract that is not retroactive. It's rather detailed and complicated and which I go into probably in too much detail in one of the subsequent staff reports and, and resolution that's required by PERS to adopt that. But that is essentially an implementing resolution subject to the, the collective bargaining agreement being adopted. And then the other retirement component relates to the city's existing 457B plan, deferred compensation plan that the, that the city has. 457 plan is just a government flavor or government version of the private sector 401K plan type of deferred compensation. It's a defined contribution plan versus a defined benefit plan. Yet again, also has a separate resolution that's necessary for us to address a number of the, the details, but again, it's subject to the collective bargaining agreement being approved. It doesn't currently have any city cost contributions for matching or, or contribution direct. It's just the administrative costs of sponsoring the plan, which the, the city has done for many years. One of the changes that was requested by the union and negotiated as part of the agreement is that all new hires will be automatically enrolled in the 457 plan and immediately begin to have 1% of their pay put into this deferred compensation plan. It's their pay, so it's 100% vested immediately. They do have the option to opt out, but they have to do so deliberately, purposefully. And again, it's also addressed as a separate agenda item later with a specific resolution. I also mentioned in the staff report, telework, remote work was another item of a great deal of discussion during the negotiations. The existing contract or the one that just expired was the first one in which the city had provisions for remote work and it was to allow the city to sort of dip our toe in the water in that regard. There weren't any substantive changes made in that regard for those provisions this time, but I certainly expect as public employers gain more experience with remote work that the aspects of the contract provisions may change over time. It's one of those provisions that, you know, is sort of unequally applied because, you know, as you recognize, you can't run a lawnmower or a snowplow from a laptop at your dining room table. So some positions lend themselves to having the opportunity for remote work and others not so much. So, the collective bargaining agreement also had a, quite a number of technical changes related to changes that legislature as well as had put through regarding the Oregon sick leave, Family Medical Leave Act on the federal level, Oregon Family Medical Leave Act changes and paid leave Oregon legislative changes that were put through. So, in any case, that's my long-winded tee-up of the collective bargaining agreement. I'm sure that all of you have read all, all 62 pages in painful detail.
Just a quiz?
Yeah, yeah. Happy to try and answer any questions that the council may have.
All right, any comments or questions?
I think it's true, we have to pass this, you know, basically, so.
Basically, yeah.
I have no question.
Okay. Counselor White, you got any comments or questions for Mr. Mueller?
No, I'll pass.
Okay. I don't necessarily have any comments or questions as well, so let's go ahead and open it up to public comment. Public comment is open regarding resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement with employees represented by ASME Local 3132. If you wish to make public comment and you are on Zoom, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record.
Hi, my name is Paige Campbell. I apologize, I'm homesick with a cold. I'm from Camas, Washington. I am on the negotiating team for ASME Local 3132 and I just want to say that I agree with everything that Eric said. We worked very hard to bargain these terms and we hope that you would approve them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige, appreciate that. Anybody else on Zoom? All right, anybody in council chambers tonight? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close, close public comment. Any further comments or discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
Well, I'm willing to take it. I'll preface it by saying I know a lot of work was put in on this and I really appreciate it, like we all do. Anyway, I move a resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement with employees represented by ASME Local 3132.
A second.
Second by Counselor White.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes.
Counselor White.
represented by ASME Local 3132.
A second. Anybody, Counsel One?
Mayor Lauer?
Yes.
Counsel White?
Yes.
Counsel Rittman?
Yes.
Counsel Caswell?
Yes.
Counsel One?
Yes.
All right, passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Yes, a lot of hard work goes into that. Let's move on to agenda item number nine, a resolution providing for current fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget transfers and making appropriation changes. Mr. Mueller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I mentioned, the collective bargaining agreement item that we just addressed had wage changes in them and which, of course, the local budget law provides for changes to the budget once adopted for items that were not known at the time of adoption. The current city budget for the current fiscal year was adopted by the city council on June 8th, well in advance of the completion of the negotiation of the collective bargaining agreement negotiations. So the provision for the wage changes were not included in the budget when it was drafted and prepared back in March and presented to the city to the Budget Committee in in April, since, of course, we didn't know what the what those changes might be. Local budget law provides for transfer of existing appropriations from either existing categories or from contingency as the case may be. The resolution I've worked up addresses making the changes or transferring appropriations from existing categories and from contingency in each of the funds, which have have personnel costs in them related to the changes in the collective bargaining agreement that was just adopted. Of course, it doesn't affect every fund in the 30-some-odd funds that are in the all of the city's budget items. As I outlined in the staff report, represents 1.15% of the total appropriations for the fiscal year, 7.78% for the Personnel Services category across the city. In all cases, there's more than adequate available contingency and/or other appropriation transfer capacity available. And the details are outlined in both of the staff report by the for the individual funds or departments, as well as in the resolution that provides for the budget transfers and appropriation changes. So I'm happy to address any questions that the council may have.
Any comments or questions? Not seen anybody. Let's go ahead and open it up to public comment on Zoom. If you would like to make public comment regarding agenda item number eight, sorry, number nine, a resolution providing for current fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget transfers and making appropriation changes. Now's the time on Zoom, go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and city of residence for the record, please. All right, anybody in council chambers? Okay, close public comment. Any other further discussion? Entertain a motion.
Go for it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the resolution providing for current fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget transfers and making appropriation changes.
Second.
Mayor Lauer?
Yes.
Counsel White?
Yes.
Counsel Rittman?
Yes.
Counsel Caswell?
Yes.
Counsel One?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number 10, the three-peat, a resolution designating all city employees' PERS-required 6% Individual Account Program employee contributions as member-paid pre-tax contributions. Mr. Mueller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is another resolution related to implementing a provision or term in the collective bargaining agreement that was adopted now two agenda items ago. I won't drill down into into the depths of the nuances related to the the different pieces of it, unless, of course, there's questions. But effectively, now the city pays the 6% directly as an individual expense line item in each department or each budget that there is personnel. Under the switch, we'd no longer pay that one amount out of that line item, and rather that 6% would be paid in each of the imposition budget line items that are in in the budget. Effectively, what is currently, it's a 6% direct city expense. It moves essentially to being a 6% indirect city expense in that we pay it to the city as wages and then it's immediately withheld, just like we withhold taxes from employees' pay, but it is technically employees' pay that we're withholding and sending to PERS under that scenario versus currently, it's technically city money when we send it to PERS. It's a nuance that goes into the some of the machinations related to the Internal Revenue Service Code, as well as how it applies to FICA and Social Security. But the PERS provisions, there's quite a number of them in terms of, that's why the the resolution and staff report are a bit thick in terms of the the language, but it provides for the contributions to be paid by the employees but remitted by the city rather than they're currently paid by the city. This provides a couple of benefits, which is why ASME had had negotiated for it. Part of it is is that the PERS system, the tier one and tier two have a different kind of a compensation formulation for their pension calculations under the tier three or the OPSERP. Making this change is beneficial to them, helps even out some of the inequities between the different the different tiers. It benefits on the ultimate pension calculation and also benefits on the Social Security wage base on it for the employees. And again, we're moving the 6% from one budget line item to another budget line item. I'm happy to go into more technical detail if somebody in the council really wants to, but I'll probably stop it there so that I don't make any more eyes glaze over. Happy to address any questions.
Comments or questions? All right, I'm sorry, public comment on Zoom. If you wish to make public comment, again, go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and city of residence for the record, please. Okay, anybody in council chambers tonight? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. And again, if there's no discussion, entertain a motion.
I'll do it. I'll make a motion that we accept a resolution designating all city employees' PERS-required 6% Individual Account Program employee contributions as member-paid pre-tax contributions.
Second.
Mayor Lauer?
Yes.
Counsel White?
Yes.
Counsel Rittman?
Yes.
Counsel Caswell?
Yes.
Counsel One?
Yes.
All right, passes. Moving on to agenda item number 11, a resolution approving an amendment, excuse me, restatement of an existing 457 deferred compensation plan. Mr. Mueller, I think this is the dynasty. I think you're officially in a dynasty. After a three-peat, you move to dynasty level.
Okay, all right, okay.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I, you know, I come to think of it, I'm not sure if I've ever had four in a row before, but.
Here we go.
Here we go, yes. So as I mentioned, all three of these, these last three are really implementing actions or implementing resolutions driven off of the adoption of the collective bargaining agreement. One of the items in the collective bargaining agreement, as I mentioned earlier, was modifying the existing 457 plan that the city sponsors and has for many years to provide for the automatic enrollment and 1% of deferral on for new newly hired employees, excuse me. There are been a number of changes since the plan document was adopted 20 years ago in 2002 or 21 years ago, 22 years ago. And been a number of changes, IRS code and so forth. So it's also in need of update from that regard, as well as it back at that time, automatic enrollment was not something that was provided for, essentially allowed for in the law, so it didn't provide for it in the plan. So in order to be able to implement that new term that we've agreed to three agenda items ago, we need to adopt this updated plan in order to then implement that provision. Again, currently, the 457 plan, the city administers it. It's 100% voluntary. It's 100% city, city employee salary deferral, doesn't have city matching contributions or city contributions. It's just whatever the administrative cost it is to administer it, no differently than, you know, it takes our payroll specialist to administer withholding, you know, state of Oregon income taxes. It's just part of the process. It's a, you know, another long, legal, complicated document, but happy to try and address any questions the council may have.
All right, comments or questions? Okay. Open it up for public comment again. If you are on Zoom and wish to address a public comment in the council regarding resolution approving amendment and restatement of an existing 457 deferred compensation plan, now is your time. Go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record, please. All right, anybody in council chambers? Okay, go ahead and close public comment. Again, a motion, please.
I move adoption of a resolution approving amendment and restatement of an existing 457 deferred compensation plan.
I'll second.
Mayor Lauer?
Yes.
Counsel White?
Yes.
Counsel Rittman?
Yes.
Counsel Caswell?
Yes.
Counsel One?
Yes.
All right, passes. Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Appreciate your work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel? And again, thank you to all the staff and bargaining units for making this process come to fruition here tonight. All right, let's move on to agenda item number 12, an update from the Public Safety Services Delivery Working Group. Mr. Ray Young, city manager, let's go.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee met two weeks ago on Monday evening last, and that was the first opportunity to discuss that we had gotten a, I don't know if I want to call it an offer or a proposal or simply their first shot across the bow from an estimate. Yeah, from the sheriff's office for law enforcement services beginning on July 1st of 2025. Captain Asbo was there to answer questions about service levels and why this or why that, but we got to the point where it was very clear from the sheriff's offices, you know, that's what we calculate, it should cost for the city and is the, because I sent you all, and I sent the whole council a copy of it, which is there, I was saying was like $7.9 million versus this year's $4 million that we're paying. So quite a huge increase, and we had some concerns about their numbers, things like that. But at this point in the discussions, it became clear that responding by committee was not necessarily the best path to go, and we discussed that probably from this point to have to review it and actually respond back to the county, we probably should look back to the model we used in 2014, 15 and have a negotiating committee. And so at this point, both Counsel Whitren and Counsel One, who are on the Public Safety Working Group, were both going to be here tonight and and kind of take it from there as to what they were thinking it might be, but the thoughts of staff, and no decision has been made tonight, but the idea is at this point, since we kind of told them what we wanted, they came back and put a price tag on it, we need to kind of come through. We have a whole list of information that I need to request from the sheriff's office still, because there's like, all right, how did you calculate that we needed, you know, three detectives instead of the one we have now, things like that. So we need to get their raw data to figure out how they came up with these calculations. But once we've gotten that, we need to have a probably a negotiating committee that's less than a public meeting required group to be able to actually create a negotiating plan and respond back to the county. So the staff recommendation was we have a committee of five, that would be myself, Mr. Trunkie, and then three citizens, council members, committee members, whatever, would probably be the the largest group you would want to be part of that process, that would of course report back to the council in executive session on those status. But I'll just look over and I think we talked about giving you hand motions like, Counselor One, do you have any insights or comments of that discussion as to what you want the council to think about between now and we could put on the agenda next council meeting for a motion or a vote, but anything you want to add to that?
No, I think that was it was pretty well stated. We, as a group, feel like we need to move quicker than we're actually moving, and so we wanted to expedite getting this community together to look at and negotiate the contract. We, I think we, as a group, agreed on two council members, one member of the working group, and then our two fine fellows over there. And so I think that the sooner we do that, the better to get that ball rolling, and I think there's going to be a lot that goes into that, so. And we also, Ray, you had, you were meeting as a group with Happy Valley to to kind of get some more information, just to kind of help us with our decisions and how we approach what we're asking for and into how the contract's set up.
Yes. When I met last Wednesday? Yeah, last Wednesday. We met with the chief, which is a command officer from Clackamas County Sheriff, and the assistant city manager who oversees the law enforcement contract in Happy Valley. And it's a little different in Clackamas County because they've developed a system where they've been over 20-plus years, they've been refining their contract, and the rubbery started to do contract, and their pricing structure, how they do it is completely different than we do it here with Multomac County Sheriff. But in Clackamas County, Wilsonville, Estacada, and Happy Valley all negotiate together as a team for one contract. So one of the things I took away from lunch was, we may be want to think about approaching the other two East County cities and say, maybe we need to approach the sheriff's office as three cities and coordinate all of our contracts. But the problem we have now is that we agreed to a contract in 2015 on certain terms, Fairview got different terms in 2017, and quite frankly, Wood Village doesn't have really any terms other than they throw them a half a million dollars a year with no specific coverages other than they come with their call. And so one of the things we came out, we maybe should be looking at maybe the three cities. And I've heard that from the other two cities, mentioned that they might be open to the idea of, let's just scrap what we have and let's just start again with all three cities working together for what we need to do with the sheriff's office. It was the only idea we got out of that. The other thing is, is that, again, they have a whole different model that, oh, the other thing we talked about too, we talked about that, and we asked for a full-time sheriff, a full-time chief, because we knew it would be hard to share that person with another role like we do now, because we're not getting what we're paying for. But sheriff came back with, no, I only want to commit half of a command officer to be the chief of Tridale. But Captain Asbo suggested, and it was a good point, we discussed it over lunch with Happy Valley, instead of trying to maybe overpay like one full-time FTE for chief, maybe more than we actually need anyway, because there's already another command structure that oversees all of patrol deputies anyway, with sergeants and lieutenants, that maybe we instead, we have a whole list of duties that we want this person to do. He's got to be at one council meeting a month, he's got to meet management team meetings, he's got to respond to every citizen complaint correctly, he's got, you know, and I talked to the committee, I'll make them a whole list of what I think that might be, to start with, and maybe we instead of trying to pigeonhole an FTE and pay for that without being really sure that we're going to get all of that, is create a whole list of duties instead and let and then negotiate about how much that represents as an FTE, and as long as we get done what we want the chief to do, well, then we're fine in that sense. So that was another thing that came out of our discussion with Captain Asbo, and I talked to Happy Valley about it, and they thought.
Yeah, that was one of the line items that we kind of came from our conversation with him was, what do we want from our chief? What is our expectations? And getting those expectations into works, because as we discussed, the contract currently is very vague. There's no specifics in it, and so it's it's really hard to hold them accountable for anything due to the language of the contract. And so it was something we discussed, like, again, what do we want from from that person? And how much in real time is that that we're asking for? And the flip side of that is is perception, right? So if you have a full-time chief, that perception is maybe a little bit different, and is that important to the citizens and to everybody, so.
But at this point, we're kind of the point where we probably need to nail down, going back to them, saying, back to them saying, hey, based on what you said, it's no, we don't want this, we don't want that, but we'd rather do this or this, and be able to actually start an actual dialogue with the Sheriff's Office in terms of the next steps to get moving on and hit that looks So that's the report, so my suggestion is we put it on the doc, the agenda for September 10th and make a motion at that time, and it'd be maybe nice to have Counselor Wittrin, who's been involved for a long time and available also, along hopefully Counselor Glantz, so we get everybody together, make a motion. So anyway, so that report, plus I think from Counselor One and myself, is think about how we want to proceed next, actually engage in active negotiations.
So it's good. Any comments or questions from council?
Was the working group made aware of this change?
Yeah, we talked about, yeah, we spent a while talking about all of these issues two weeks ago.
Let's go ahead and open up public comment. Anybody on Zoom wishes to make comment on the report we just heard from City Manager Ray Young regarding Public Services Delivery Working Group? Go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record. Okay, anybody in council chambers? All right, closed public comment. Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Counselor One, appreciate it, and then we'll look forward to the next city council meeting. All right, let's move on to Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Staff Communications. Mr. Ray Young.
We are now in the post-filing situation, and I had staff provide you our current list of files for mayors and for city council members. I'll just speak generally that we've got a list of.
A lot.
Looks like 11 people filing for four council positions. I think this is the most people we've had file for positions as long as I can remember, so who knows why, but maybe the running as a group may what spurred people as opposed to having to run against somebody in particular, I don't know, but we have a good filing for that. So the everyone on that list can withdraw by Friday, so the finalized list is not posted till next week from the Multoma County Elections Office, but that's the list we have started for you there. Second of all, of course, next Monday is Labor Day, the city offices will be closed next Monday. Third, we are working with Metro, as I've told most of you, I think, that we are proceeding right now to enter to a contract with Coff Construction to construct the Sandy waterfront trail. They were the low bidder, and they met all of our background checks and everything we did, and we're working on a contract now with them, but we thought it would be great to do a groundbreaking ceremony together, which what Metro usually likes to have when they use their grant money to pay for part of this project, and also do a ribbon cutting the same day for the trail that goes north of 84. So we're looking at a date sometime, hopefully toward the end of September. You'll get notices for that, so we'll have an event where we'll be, we'll do a groundbreaking at one end, south of the 84 bridge over the Sandy, and then we'll do a ribbon cutting on the north end, same time, we'll just go back and forth through those two projects. So just so you know, that will be coming. So as we dedicate the one project, we're also going to be starting our waterfront trail project, so you'll be getting information on that soon. And then finally, not this Friday, but the following Friday is our last first Friday of the summer. So plan to come on down and hopefully have a great time. The weather should be about 85, or what it says now, it should be really good weather for the last first Friday, so we've got that on September 6th. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Council Communications. I'm going to go first tonight. I usually don't, but I'm going to. We do have, as I believe it was Mr. Paul Wilcox stated in public comment, we have an unprecedented amount of applicants vying for five seats, including mine. Council President Rittma and Counselor One have put their names in for the mayor's seat, and I wish them well, and I know that they'll do a really good job of being respectful and keeping to decorum, which is what the the mayor's seat demands and what the community asks for with their representative. And with all the city councilors exiting, Counselor Caswell, Counselor White, Counselor Glantz, and Counselor Wittrin, a couple are have put their names in to rerun, Counselor White and Counselor Wittrin, and then they're joined by Matt Lawrence, Robbie Cantrell, Rip Caswell, John Leamy, Carol Allen, Paul Wilcox, Bryce Bumgarner, Frank Stevens, Jesse Davidson. Again, I ask that we keep everything as respectful as possible. We can always do a good job at respecting our neighbors, asking for an opportunity to represent their neighbors here in the city council. So again, treat this campaign with the same amount of respect that these seats and that our citizens command and demand from us. And then finally, Ballot Measure 26248 prohibits additional recreational marijuana retails in Tridale, allows existing retailers. This is something that means a lot to me, and I hope that we can vote accordingly with our morals and judgments intact, and remember, we can do better, and we don't have to sell drugs to do better. Council President Rittma.
I'll just say it was a nice summer. Weather was, you know, better than previous years, but had some ups and downs, but I wish everyone a happy Labor Day weekend. That's all.
Counselor One?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm the honor of running against Mr. Rittma, and I, you know, I either either way, I'm very happy with the way the city is going, and this city is going to be in good hands post-Meer Lauer, and I just, I think that that's the most important thing. So we, yeah, it was a great summer, and I'm on a transition where my kid is in high school now, so it's a little bit different with just, you know, navigating that, and so I appreciate everybody, I appreciate the citizens and the challenges of life, and this is a great place to live. So I'm done.
It feels like summer in here tonight. It is warm.
I kept turning it down.
Counselor White.
Yeah, I was glad to see the general store reopened, and it's a nice, family-friendly new business in downtown, and I wanted to thank the Historic Society for the concert they put on, and the the new general store provided some popcorn for for free for that event, so that was really nice of them to do that. And, you know, I'm wondering about on Ballot Measure 26248, since council unanimously called for the moratorium, which triggered this, had to go to the voters, and then, so we were ahead of the governor on this one, because then later the governor did her own moratorium for now on any new licenses, so, because there were kind of a flood of these types of businesses, but I'm wondering if if council shouldn't write something as a proponent in in the voter's pamphlet, or if that's even possible to do, because I think it would be a powerful message coming from from the council itself.
Costs $500 to publish in the in the voter's pamphlet, if I remember right. Most of the counties are the same as the state one, but you would you would put it in the county one, I think. And and it would take a resolution of council to appropriate the money and to delegate somebody to put together the language, if I remember right, the cutoff dates, August 27th, so.
Which is today.
Yeah.
Are you kidding me?
Yeah.
I thought it was the 9th of September.
It's possible.
I think it is.
Yeah, I think for, yeah, statements in the voter's pamphlet ending next week.
There are some things for the voter's pamphlet have to be in by today, the 17th, but other things that I couldn't tell you.
Ed, when when I was on the that Flood District, Urban Flood District Board, we were prohibited as members of that board from commenting pro or con on the measure that went before the voters in May. We could talk as private citizens, but as a group or as an official person who was responsible for putting it on the ballot, or at least was a part of the body that was responsible, we were somehow prohibited, does that?
The body can can put things that are educational and explanatory on a ballot, but they can't be pro or con.
Well, there's not much point in putting one in, we're not going to be pro or con. I just point that out, that we may be very limited on what we can say, and I, so, let's make sure, if the deadline's passed, it won't matter, but I do think it's a little later than today for putting in an argument, but usually an argument to me, I'm sorry, this is your time, Glenn, but usually an argument to me is pro or con, not just, we don't want to put out a lot of educational stuff about marijuana.
Yeah, no, and that as a proponent, so to the measure.
Ed, check on that.
So they'll look into it, maybe we'll get a, I'll get an email with Ed and Ray going tomorrow, and then.
It is September 1st.
Okay, and then we'll have Ray send out an email to council and see what our options are, if we even do have an option to do a proponent letter. Proponent letter, yeah. All right, anything else, Counselor White?
That's all I have, thank you.
Counselor Caswell?
Yep, nothing for me, thanks.
All right.
I'm openly adjourned.
Seconded by Counselor White, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay? Okay, have a good evening, everybody, thank you very much.